It's 7 o'clock. I'd like to start the planning commission, village of Leonard special meeting. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A short invocation that we pray that we can make fair and just decisions for the best interests of Leonard, our community. Amen. Okay, I'll start with the roll call. Paul Almotti, absent. Leslie McKenna here. Doug Noaker.
Here.
Jennifer Swag here. Laura Zonak here. Okay, next I'd like to take an extra few moments to review the minutes from our September 16th meeting. Everyone want to just kind of look at them for a second and then I'll tell you when you're done. I always do that, the meeting, the meeting minutes come second. It's the agenda that's first. Can I make a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, I'll second that. Okay, so then after reviewing the minutes, can someone make a motion for approval? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 16th meeting a second ago. Okay, now at this time, I would like to have a motion to close the planning commission meeting so that we can move on to the public hearing. I'll go ahead and make that motion. Can I get a second? I'll second your motion to close. Okay, now I'd like to have a motion to open the public hearing. Can I get a motion? I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. I don't know that that needs an all in favor. Does it need an all in favor?
Technically, for your agenda and minutes, you should have a voice vote. If you pass an amendment to ordinance or whatever, it's usually better than you have a roll call. But you don't really deal with money here, so roll call.
Okay, so all in favor. I hope the closing and opening. Aye.
Aye.
All right. The public hearing today is to hear public comment on ordinance amendment of the village of Leonard zoning ordinance number 19. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of persons and property by limiting off-premise alcohol sales outlets and concentration operation and those areas that are most compatible with such uses. Noting the audience attendance, do we have any comments or questions?
No, it wouldn't be appropriate for me to counter at this time.
So hearing no comments, no questions. I move to close the public hearing. I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Now can I get a motion to reopen the planning commission meeting?
I'll make a motion to reopen the planning commission.
Can I get a second? I'll second your motion to open the meeting. Can I get an all in favor on both the closing and opening of the public hearing and planning commission meetings?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Audience business. Any audience business? No audience business. Okay, planning commission business. We can discuss the alcohol ordinance or any questions, comments that any of the commissioners had regarding the alcohol, limiting the sales to, I think it was four instances, four licenses in the village. Anyone have any comments? Do you think it's good for the village to have a limit? We wouldn't want 100. We don't want to be Vegas of public comment. Anyone else have any comments?
I don't have nothing. The amendment seems outlandish or crazy or out of character for the village.
Especially for the size of our village.
The size of the village and the closeness of the villages.
Right.
We are only one mile by a mile.
Right, one mile.
Almost a square.
Almost a square. But not even, so I don't think that should have an issue with four being a maximum. Two are in use currently, right? One is technically.
One is technically in use.
So the second one is.
The other one is, maybe dormant at the moment.
So it could be opened at any time, but dormant.
Right. And the ordinance also keeps the opportunity to have these licenses on the main roads. So there's not going to be something in the neighborhood or something like that. It's going to be.
Not buildings with purpose.
Inappropriate area.
So nothing seems crazy. Protects the village residents as a, isn't it?
So having discussed the alcohol ordinance, I would like to now have a motion to send our recommendation to the village of Leonard council to amend the village of Leonard zoning ordinance number 19, I think it's number two, dash two, to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of persons and property by limiting off-premises alcohol sales outlets and concentration operation and to those areas that are most compatible with such uses as written. I will make that motion. Excited. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Does that require a roll call vote?
I don't think so. As long as it's about, you know, amendments or.
Okay, moving on to the sidewalk discussion. I had a chance to go over the draft that we prepared from last meeting. And I cleaned it up a bit, moved a few things around that you asked to have moved. And since our last meeting, we've got, it's a little more organized. So there's a few things that still need to be done. I'd still like to try and get it to the village council by November. It might not make it to them before their meeting, but they would at least have it in their mailboxes electronically. And then we could, they could address it in December if need be, if it makes it by November. Since they've delayed their meeting.
Since they won't really meet.
Yeah, it might make it. So let me compare it to the old version so if we can say where I made changes. Get it. Save us some time. The only thing that changed in the first paragraph was complete street program as of November 2021. Someone had said as of this date. I didn't know if they meant to put in the actual month or just put in the words as of this date. I think it was your comment, Doug. Do you remember that?
Yeah, yeah, what you said was starting point.
Right.
Basically, you know, month I think was when we started, so.
Okay. So that was a change there. Then in the funding sources, I moved up the Act 51 money to the second position because that's what the group said, I guess. Added under millage, details, detail, need details if possible. Is millage spelled right there?
Yeah.
Okay. It looks like, I was seeing my.
My is one.
Okay. Then.
We have a lake and D70 helping, pardon my interruption.
That's fine.
We're not talking about increasing the millage as a council, so I would expect it to remain the same as far as income.
So if we wanted to get an increase.
You can make a case for it.
Right. We'd have to have all kinds of dollar studies done and everything. I don't know.
This plan is like a first step.
Right.
To give us an idea of what the priorities are going to be. But it will all of a sudden get the budget mapped.
Right. So if we submit these plans on our wishes, we don't necessarily have to have funding sources yet.
No, no. Right, good. Your last two, the Michigan Transportation Fund, you know, road commission, that, there's a program called TAP, which is Transportation Alternatives Program, that the village is required to fund non-overhyped transportation projects within the village. What we've done in the past is we've replaced sidewalks, et cetera, along with road projects. And, but the 9% gets spent there. So we don't spend it every year and kind of save it up and then it contributes to being able to do significant work periodically. But you should be aware of that, that that money is there for use in sidewalks or actually they prefer pathways because, like the preferred word now.
Pathways? We should change our thing to say pathways? Or slash pathways?
Slash pathways, if you can put.
Perfect.
But that money is limited. It depends on how much we get from the Michigan Transportation Fund, which has been pretty steady because the legislators have been putting money in. But that could end this budget here. You know, they could say 2022, we're not going to do that. So it could drop pretty rapidly.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I apologize for not giving you that information earlier.
Okay. So someone had said something about Grant Addison Township outreach. Do you know anything about that one? If there'd be any cooperative money that could come out of our township instead of just our village?
I really doubt it. The main street program had approached Addison Township about trying, if they wanted to maybe kind of try and create a downtown area like in Lakeville or wherever. And the township had no interest in doing that. For, I think obvious reasons, I mean, it's, Leonard is here. They make a very supportive of us in a lot of their decisions and in their zoning. So that we don't have competition outside of Leonard for gas stations and other things like that, so.
Well, I know that Sharp was a representative to the main street program. I went with her once to a meeting, but that could be also an opening that could be mentioned at the town meeting.
Yeah, along with the cable representative, we definitely have pulled through.
Okay. The other change I added was crosswalk safety was added, which now add TAP after that. Let's see. Oh, yeah, I added, yeah, moved that. All right, then, pre-planning phase, current discussions. Is that something we need to actually keep in there? Or it's just kind of what we're doing, probably could come out now? I didn't know. I had it circled and we had it in italics.
I think it kind of gives the village forward and understanding what we're going and what we're looking at. Even though it may be not necessarily something that.
Maybe best happens.
Gets on done right now or anything like that, but you know, it's a way to walk yourself forward.
Right. Okay, then we had the scope. That, nothing changed there. Then we had identified proper areas and obstacles. We made a slight change there, took out some verbiage, something about less than X over X distance for slopes. We just addressed it with saying utilize slopes with landing for slope sections. Once we figured out the way we can actually stair step down. Intersection corners must be ADA compliant with raised dots. We added, we took out the parentheses around raised dots. We changed areas of concern to continued maintenance. And then we added one line, the line one inch trip hazard maintenance grinding or filling. We added that. Projects, nothing changed there except for the word on changed to from. Okay, then, like here are, it's kind of like a mission statement again, kind of reiterating. Projects, complete a network of sidewalks from east to west and north to south from the two major crossroads of Elmwood and Forest. Sidewalks would allow most residents to utilize a safe path to downtown without walking in the road. Roadway or road? Doesn't matter. So here's where we made a change in the phases. We had like a list of projects and I took the list of projects and started plugging them into years. So this is where the phases we have to discuss and talk about if this is how we want to submit it. So we decided phase one, fall 2021, the first year, I went down to the Polly and Trail and looked at the sidewalk there, started peeling back the grass to see, there is some more sidewalk under there. It's sunken down, so I want to go down there with, you know, my husband and actually take a space. I want to flip some of that sod over and see how far the sidewalk goes. Right at the Polly and Trail.
Where? Elmwood or Rochester?
Oh, no, yeah, Rochester Road South, the west side of the road.
Oh, where it looks like it's disconnected.
Yeah, or where there's grass between the sidewalk. Well, it is for a little while, but then there's, it's either sunken down so that there's a drainage issue and the drainage is bringing all the dirt there making the grass grow. So there's, you know, there's an issue there, but there is, I don't know how far it was going. I was this far digging and it was still going, so it was a foot grass over the end, so there might be even more.
Same thing I did, I fixed that, I didn't get it in my street.
Right, how much was covered? Quite a bit.
Probably close to a foot.
Right.
Getting approached back upon the.
Right, so maybe there's only a foot there. I'll have to take a look. But that would be our first thing that we could still do because it's still warm and there's still a couple nice days left. So that was my volunteer. So the second part of that would be in, once it's determined, how much is there? The gravel that's for the Polly and Trail, it's at the trailhead, could be put in that place to get rid of the grass and connect it at least temporarily with the gravel and then, what do you call, limestone bed? And then look at extending the cement further or maybe the gravel would be sufficient. Because it's just kind of, it's a 10-foot section. There's grass there. So that's a small project and repair. So that in the summer of next year, if it's determined that that's 10 feet, we can connect it with cement and DPW and planning commission and volunteers who signed waivers could all do that. So phase one, it would be like phase one continued in the spring. Connect the sidewalk at the Leonard Community Church on South Street in the southwest quadrant of the village. There's 20 feet of sidewalk and then I have to get the photo. Where there's sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk right by the church. So that was one of our things that we looked at. It doesn't have to be that priority, but it's just a small project.
Just seems like a pity.
It's, yeah, it's an easy one to tackle. So then I have this repair number three, four, five, six. That were some of the pictures that we had where the sidewalk was in 50,000 pieces on our bike ride. We had bought a couple of them. I'll just write the descriptions or just include their photos. Really small right there possibly, because if they really speak to, the pictures really speak to, oh man, that needs to be drenched. So those were the four major ones out of those 12 shots we had. And I'll send this to you once I put those pictures in. And then there's that phone that's got to go there too. Okay, phase one, one to two years, new sidewalk project Rochester Road, Forest Street, southbound. New five-foot sidewalk south on Rochester Road, Forest Street, from Polly and Trail through nature park to Baza Street. Now I don't know if it would be totally funded by a donation to the nature park, but at least partially.
At least partially, that remains to be seen.
Okay. So also it was, came to our attention that we could have a possible safety crosswalk at the Polly and Trail with a push button flashing light on both sides. And that's also from the, someone in the village has donated somebody and that could be possible that they requested that more safety be at that crossroads. So that's a possibility. Connect existing sidewalk from town to the Polly and Trail. It would be probably four feet wide because it transitions, it's already four feet wide and we'd have to determine how the, we need the footage there by looking at the maps of how far it is from the last bit of sidewalk to, what was it? It's the.
It's north of the trail, starting from the trail.
Where the, on the west side, where the retaining wall is.
No. East side of the road, along that fence.
Oh, okay.
There's that one big tree there, but it's not in the sightline of where the sidewalk would have to go. It might have to go a little curve around.
Yeah, go around it.
So it's not very far. Up to a number of lots, we'd have to look at. Can you see it out here? I believe it's on this map, I don't know if it might copy.
There's one section that's going to be a little bit tricky because there's a drain running in it.
Yeah, there's a couple of drains.
You know, I did see that and I.
One at the, on the north end where they kind of went around and actually cemented in.
Right.
But to continue across there, there's one just about in the middle, the section that would point to.
Right, I did notice that the sidewalk angles there. So if we bring it back, it misses, it misses that drainage. They did go.
There's another one.
There's another one, okay. So it's, gosh, it's only like, it's like four lots. What is the street? Because there's sidewalk in front of the old Studios 44. And it ends right there, I think.
It turns off way to the corner.
Right.
Of Division Street.
Right.
And then across Division Street, there's an access cut there, I believe, to continue a sidewalk.
Right.
In the curb, but I don't think there's some under that.
Yeah, there's a cement there because there's also a drain and then actually the cement and the sidewalk actually come together at that corner. This one you get further down, the Chaucer, it's that long line.
So it really should say from town at Division Street to the Polly and Trail, which is four lots, I think, according to this map. Is that what you guys are seeing? It's like one, two, three, four. So maybe just saying four lots is enough, we don't actually have to get the measurements? Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's, there's a drain that's right in here.
So there's two drains to deal with.
And there's one over here, that one we have to deal with.
Right.
But you'll have to take a look at it because there's also a property owner is bringing, has got to bring it leads into the same area, so it's. Not impossible, just.
No, it's, yeah, it's probably a small bow around or angled. So it goes from Division Street to Polly and Trail, four lots long. It would be continuous if it was the four feet sidewalks all the way to the Polly and Trail. Or at that point where it crosses Division Street, we could go five feet. Do we want to make a choice on that or because of the drain that we have to go around, we should keep it four so it makes it around the drain? Or they could actually go around the drain and reduce the, I don't.
When I looked at it, I didn't really see much of a way to get around it because it is close to the road. So, but that needs to be looked at, just, you know, we do need a sidewalk in that area. We're just going to have to figure out.
Right. So I don't know if putting four feet wide to five foot wide, maybe I should just take that off. I don't know.
If further study needs to.
I can help.
Sure.
Now that I'm going for a sidewalk anymore.
Okay.
If they're not considering us anything under the law, existing ones, you can replace, repair, but you can't.
Okay, install something.
You can't put new in, asking them on five feet.
Okay. What about the 20-foot section in front of the church? Maybe the five?
Is it four now?
I'm guessing that's probably four.
Case by case, we'll take, yeah. A short section like that wouldn't be, it's.
Well, like I said, that's existing, but it's different than.
It's the house, and then part of the house is yard and part of the church is access to their driveway. It's like half and half on the people and.
This church over here?
The one that's in the.
Not this.
South, the subdivision.
You're talking about the small church behind, closer to your house.
Oh, oh.
I heard almost that house next to it.
I'm lost.
Yeah.
Down there where the Southern Beach parents lived. I don't know the name.
South and, uh, what is it?
Are you talking about?
South and.
Over by the old, the Leonard Community Church?
Yes.
South and.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Leonard Community.
Uh, down there.
Sorry, yeah.
No, that's okay.
Leonard Community Church.
I heard the church owns the house that's next door too.
I think one of them.
We'd be renting that or something like that. So obviously there'd be agreement from property owners on that.
Yeah.
Okay, but I think both of those were wider sidewalks. I don't think they're small.
They weren't three feet.
No.
Do you think they were five? We'd have to check.
You might have to, you guys have five or four.
Just to check. Okay. If you happen to walk by there, I mean, I'll go check, but anybody who knows or sees or if you have a chance before I get to, just text me.
That'd be awesome.
Baza Street to the fire station. That would be continuing the, you know, on, from the Pallian Trail.
Which one's Baza, I gotta figure it out.
Baza, okay. It's one. I don't know where the sidewalk starts specifically. I don't have your maps with me.
Right.
So it's not very far. It looks like at the most it's three lots.
Just got to connect the, no, it, it goes from Baza, Mason Street all the way to the, uh, Art Department.
So there's nothing.
What it needs is, uh, right there at the road.
Right.
It needs to have.
ADA.
The ADA compliance and probably just a couple of feet maybe up to it.
Right, okay. So that's, that'd be south of Baza.
Yep.
So Baza Street to Fire Station, uh, ADA and, uh, uh, several, several feet connector. Is that good?
It may be, that is, so it's, that's something I just have to look at.
Okay. So then, um, during our survey, we noticed that there were street signs missing in the South Street subdivision. We have to kind of just go in there and figure out what signs are missing.
It was within West Whitehead, South Division corner.
So that just requires another actual go in there and write down the names of the signs that we want to put in there. Now does that mean we match the signs that are there?
There are the, to match those current signs that we use are, it's incredibly expensive because they don't make stamps, stamps anymore. So you can still get them, but they're pretty cheap.
Okay. So maybe a new signage would be cheaper to replace some that are there?
Probably cheaper to replace the existing, rather than just to go back and replicate what's missing.
Right. But that, that's not the whole village.
It's just for that corner, nothing else.
Unless you just, I think they're white with black. We could still order white reflective with black lettering that would look similar.
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
Right, okay.
I think we're going to probably replace some signs in there, in.
Yeah, the Elmwood Street project, we replaced the sign, the Division Street by the mill there, and I think that's a modern sign.
Or just as new signs are being made, make them all the modern ones. That's why overtime has the village evolves and does new things. Everything would eventually match instead of kind of a mismatched scenario in here.
You ever driven through the Bluefield Hills? They have gorgeous, you know, they have cast poles and.
Right.
Really nice signs, but.
Break that down, he's just saying he wants.
Right. I mean, I think from far away, the lettering's really large.
Right, yeah. If I needed a couple million dollar people, who would it?
Exactly.
Like 20 of them.
Okay, so I'll, I'll fill that in. Um, volunteer project, uh, clean up interim vegetation and uncover historic stairs behind the Leonard Market. Goal is to at least increase walking safety, improve the village corner aesthetics and uncover a historic element. What kind of permission would we need to do that?
If we're within the right of way, the village, it would, it would be probably property, but Doug and I were talking about those stairs not too long ago and I don't know if they're within the right of way. They might be on the.
Pretty darn close because they're very close to the road. There is not a shoulder there.
So we could probably just think, get in there, you know, but you let the owner know.
If you draw line from his sidewalk south, we're well within that.
Okay, the, the sidewalk along the building?
The, the sidewalk in front of his house, the yellow house up there in the corner. The white picket fence there, if you draw a line through there.
It's, it's.
Oh, okay.
It's not.
Well, within that, because it almost moves a little bit more east as it goes.
So, um, phase three, three to four years out. Continue the sidewalk what's found on Elmwood, uh, on the south side of the street. Uh, no significant tree obstacles. There's one slight tree to bend around. Uh, one or two small shrubs, they either can be, they're in the right of way, they can be removed. Less obstacles than the north side of the road and certainly less hills. So, uh, that would encompass new sidewalk from distinctive design to the top of the hill on the south side of Elmwood. It begins at the west edge of distinctive design property line and continues to address 167. And then we could create a crosswalk across Elmwood at the top of the hill near where the school bus stops. School buses need a line of sight of 400 feet when stopping on hills and at this point coincides with the end of the sidewalk in front of the Rosie Court subdivision, providing safe access to the school buses and across the street. Should we add that?
Actually, I think it would have to go to 205, which is me, to meet up with Rosie.
Okay, I didn't know the address. I had 157, oh, I do have north of 205 on here.
Yep, 167.
The bus stops at 167, okay.
Yeah, the bus stops at 167, 205 is where you have to take the.
So, okay, so just change it to 205.
To get to Rosie.
Right, right across that, that's on the hill, near where the bus, it's near, okay. Then, you, I did see this on my notes. I should say north of 205.
And I did walk down, um, because now I have a middle school, so we walked down the bus at 6:05 AM. It was black.
Right.
I couldn't see anything, so it would be helpful.
If it was sooner, yeah, three or four hours.
Well, there is traffic. We're running, we're walking around.
Where is the near street by?
It's, it's right there. It's not, it's in the area of the bus stop.
I think that's, yeah, a little bit west of S5.
Oh, west of S5 is black. Like anything up the hill is black going up. It's black to the corner. It's black from the corner down, this way, this way. I mean, all I see is fork.
Right, it's dark.
I don't know where else they're picking up, but I know it was, it was quite dark. So you would definitely miss us walking there.
So school buses need a sideline of 400 feet when stopping on hills and this point coincides with the end of the sidewalk, I already said that. There are limited brush obstacles and only one berm hill to contend with. Need photo. So I'll put a photo there. Phase three, five to six years. Extend the existing northbound sidewalk on the east side of Forest, north of Elmwood, just past corridor homestead. I need their addresses. So we're talking going north on Rochester Road from town, along.
From Barbershop.
Barbershop. There's, and I have a picture here to give, to give light. The, the owner of the property on the corner, of the Barbershop owner property, the vegetation is all growing through the fence and it's impeding almost half the sidewalk. It's sticking way out.
We cleaned it off last year, we had a volunteer, and this year we didn't have a volunteer. And that's, that's, that's not the only area in town where we have.
Vegetation.
Intrusion on the sidewalk.
So we were proposing writing up a letter to send out the next time you send out the newsletter. Adding a section of, uh, please remember, you know.
Well, it's interesting that, that we're here to talk about that because, um, we really need that sidewalk needs to be redone going from, from the building north up. And it should continue, I, this is a crossing situation just down, like down by your house. We've got a good sidewalk on one side, no sidewalk with difficult terrain to manage and really not enough room to make a long gradual slope or anything like that. So with discussion has been, put a crossing at the top of it instead of at the driveway where it is now.
Replace the whole sidewalk.
Get racing as I walk in front of Mrs. Ostringer's house, who's formerly quarter. And then run up to the top of the hill basically to make a crossing there, have a legitimate crossing, you know, rather than a casual crossing, which is what we have now.
Would that require signs too?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We definitely want to do it, but I mean.
Right.
I think we forgot is marking the roads where these crossings are at.
Yeah, but you shouldn't.
We kind of need that sort of.
On paved roads, you definitely want to have, uh, signage, especially where the speeds are 25 and above.
Okay, this, speed limit is still 25 there. It's 25 in both instances.
Yeah, it's the same loss as 25, where it shouldn't be lower, so.
Okay, so, um, for phase four, seven to eight years, I didn't have anything. So.
To be determined?
To be determined. Well, we, we did go through, I mean, I could move, look at completing and managing sidewalks on other sides of road and just move that up to seven to eight years and not have a 10-year plan.
I think the plan has been created rest.
It is. Should we bring someone?
I wouldn't mind a offer here or two. To allow somebody to kind of.
How would you word that in the plan?
I might make phase, uh, look at phase one, we skip to two.
It says one dash two, I think, doesn't it?
Oh, okay, so I was thinking that was one to two years.
Right. Oh, I see what you said, I did a phase one.
I think I got that one, so this will be a phase two. I would just extend.
Oh, okay, there is no phase two.
So phase two, phase three, phase four would have to be the five to six years.
Okay, start, start from the beginning.
Yep, so phase one would be 21 to 22, 28, 21 to 20, 22. Phase two would be one to two years out.
Well, we could probably.
At phase two, right?
Yeah, I would say phase one could be continued, the, the sidewalk in the park could be still phase one.
Okay, so that's part of the.
If you're.
You think we could get sidewalk this summer or not realistic?
In 2021, it's almost.
2022, sorry, yeah, we have them up here.
Okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, for sure, 2022 is doable for a sidewalk project of that size.
Okay, so that's that one. So the phase, that's we have it named phase three.
Right, should be phase two.
Would be phase two, okay. And that would be 2023.
Two, twenty. Okay. So that phase three is in line.
Yeah.
Phase four is just.
I would, I guess I would probably make phase four and five one phase and as a more of a catch off because that's going to get. This is a living document.
Yeah.
So as the phases become closer, it's very likely to change them. Maybe, as I said, keep phase four as the seven to 10 years out.
Ah, seven to 10 years, okay. And just say, look at completing.
And then.
Remaining sidewalks. Sidewalk projects or?
Future projects.
Future projects, just like this future project.
Look at completing. Future, just tell me what to say.
Yeah, look at completing future projects on both sides or on remaining ones or.
Future. Future projects. On other sides of the road.
Or remaining.
Oh, future projects, um.
Remaining opportunities. Some of these may bump around, we may need some years.
Years, yeah, right.
Accessibilities, future accessibility. Because that's what we're doing is making access within the village. Now the village may, we're doing sidewalks, another project could come along to.
Oh, future.
Bicycle routing.
Oh, so, so pathways between the second.
Yeah.
Future accessibility projects, yeah, of course, period. So look at completing future accessibility projects. Okay. So the planning commission recommendations, and these wouldn't be split by, that should be on the next page, but it's going to change different photos. Most sidewalks should not be concrete, should be concrete, not asphalt. State federal funding, new sidewalks must be five feet wide. Most sidewalks in Leonard are currently four feet wide, oldest are three feet. To maintain a necessary look in Leonard, it is the planning commission's goal to maintain a cohesive look to the sidewalks in the village. It makes sense to repair or connect, I could say, small sidewalk sections that are currently four feet wide. We should keep them four feet wide and not replace small segments with five-feet-wide sidewalks. Refer to Figure A, and that's that illustration that I had last time that's already printed out that shows how creepy it looks when you go fat and skinny and fat and skinny. So new sidewalks of extended length would transition to all be five feet. Uh, why whether, whenever possible, to obtain state and federal funding and meet complete street standards. Summary, the goal is to move people safely and easily to common, to common community areas while connecting non-contiguous sidewalks, extending sidewalks to downtown businesses, schools, nature parks, and outline areas of our community. Complete streets improve the safety and the steps of the community, period. Okay, then we moved, you had me move some things into the appendix. Um, nothing changed in, uh, the, let's see. Nothing changed in the Oakland County goals and initiatives, because that's their goals and initiatives. Nothing changed in the Michigan goals and initiatives, because that was directly lifted from, you know, their goals and initiatives. So the community considerations. Then as part of the appendix, um, I added to equestrian needs, trail access. And then the planning commission notes were just ours. I don't think they get submitted with the plan unless you want me to put them on there. It's just our, just ours, right. So in terms of if the newsletter goes out, is there a newsletter in the works? So, in terms of if the newsletter goes out, is there a newsletter in the works? No.
News.
There are always.
One more news.
There is always a newsletter in the works. Beautification initiatives, reminder to residents to please edge and remove grass plums growing on your sidewalks in front of their home or property. Probably that would be do us the best good in the springtime.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I guess it's always a note, right?
Right, it should be a recurring message in the newsletter.
Well, that'd be...
Okay, so...
Well, it's shovel-in sidewalks now. That's what we use in the winter. That's our emphasis.
Right. Right, well, fall cleanup would be for good if there's a fall cleanup. And maybe we can have it added on the webpage. You know, I don't know how many people actually see it, but...
I don't know if we get statistics.
It would be nice if it was on the building.
On the building.
The car.
Oh, ah, yeah, you could pop that. But it would be like, yeah, right on the building that needs it.
One of the worst offenders.
Okay, so, I think with the corrections that we've made, if I add the photos in here. And we get...
As I say, an update of the street maps.
Your map, yeah.
And then that could end up part of the appendix if we wanted to.
Right.
I'm looking at it. It'd be nice if I had...
You like this map?
Full map.
I could hold this map up.
With no color.
Okay.
Street names would be okay if you could leave it.
The little street names are not in there though. In our book, this book, do you have a preferable map? I think I used number three, map three. Because one, I had too much grit on it. It's hard to find. Should I make something up for maps?
We used to have one that was legal size that was in here and it was folded and you had to open it up and it was...
Well, that was, yeah, I've got those. I think that might be just nicer for what you're doing because sometimes it's harder to see your notes on the transitions that are happening.
You can do the color code and it'd be really helpful.
And I think it'd be smaller.
When we scale it down, it's just getting harder to see. A legal sized document would be a lot nicer.
We could probably use more distinctive colors if I was to do this officially too, so that it's not questionable. I wouldn't have as many notes on it, you know, we code it so that, you know...
And I think the notes were helpful for Phase One because we didn't... I think it's in our head now.
Yeah.
This is map three only in color. I'm pretty sure that's what you worked from.
Probably.
I'll just make it bigger.
It's that split up.
I'll just make it bigger. Oh, did we want it to be one giant one? It can't be. It's just a symbol.
I think I can put one get eleven by seventeen.
I was gonna say, we were talking about doing eleven by seventeen.
That would be nice.
Actually, if we could just get rid of the four quadrants and then just probably take one to Pinkos and get one to one, eleven by seventeen.
Okay.
But I guess it doesn't help us with the shrinkage, does it?
We have to provide it. We'll size you making it, so you'd only need five copies. I mean, it'd be five for us and five for, seven for the council.
You'd work out, you know, I have a copy.
But you guys, you need ten because you guys are repeated on the council.
I'm not worried about copies as much as I am just making sure that it's bigger and probably better. Could we get the same thing on eleven by, can I, can you send me the file of domestic? Is that easy or no?
I'll just make it big and then, so do you want to do it digital?
Let's just keep it, I'm gonna print out a couple of them. If I mess it up, I can continue going. Let's just see if we can get this one enlarged as big as you can.
Right, because we don't need this, we don't need this. I can make it bigger, yes. All right, that's what I'll do.
Yes.
Black and white of that as big as we can on eleven, on eight and a half by eleven.
Just to get the four quadrants because like you said, after that, I don't care about these corners.
Well, we were working on four.
We were looking at four to put together and then I had to repeat some things.
Right.
So, it's confusing, so if we could just do one large, as big as possible on a standard sized sheet, I'll use small pens.
Okay.
And distinctive color.
All right, back to our agenda. So, I'll send it, I'll send the typewritten part to everyone for review somewhere in the next couple weeks. Make, hopefully maybe before their meeting. If everyone can take a day or two to look at and say, yeah, this is what I see, comment on it, send it back. If there's anything that conflicts, like if you make a note on one thing and you make a note on another and they're conflicting, then I'll have to either decide between the two or, you know, that's common, that's common to happen. But I would get in touch with you and let you know if there's... Yeah, I'll put it on the line.
So, whoever answers, everyone gets that.
Yeah, reply all, just reply all.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, well, if you get yours in before I get mine and you say something I already was thinking of, then I would have to mention it.
Right, okay. So, we're back to here, okay. So, I'll put the photos in that we've looked at, get the street names, get the maps to Jennifer and send it out to you for approval so we can try to make their meeting in November. It's three weeks, I should be able to do that. Okay. We are now to the village council meeting update. Trick or treat is...
Yeah, we have planning commission bylaws.
Bylaws, I know.
Oh, I missed something. Sidewalk on the agenda, yeah. Oh, okay. That is after, okay. I missed it on mine. My laws, okay, my laws. The, I'm gonna be sending you an email. The village lawyer has rewritten some of our bylaws to just, to address the issue where duellity at different councils. So, and conflict of interest. So, I haven't had a chance to review it yet. I just got it today. So, I have to talk to the lawyer if I have any questions, then I'll send that to you guys for review and we'll take it up at our next meeting. The next thing is our secretary. Lori is now on the council as the clerk. And she can't be our secretary and Jennifer is also on the council. She cannot be our secretary, so...
Any volunteers?
Any volunteers? Doug has decided to be our new secretary. So, I would like to make a motion to nominate Doug as the new secretary of the planning commission. A second? Okay. So, since it's a change, it's an all in favor vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. So, we'll notify the village council that we have a new secretary. Thank you, Doug. We'll work it out together. The transition will be smooth. The next thing is, let me see it right here. We did the bylaws, okay, back to the village update. The tree lighting festival, the trick or treating is on Halloween from six to seven. The tree lighting festival is December third, five to nine thirty. There's gonna be three Christmas trees. Oxford Middle School band's gonna play and gingerbread making. Contest?
Yep.
Contest. So, that sounds exciting. It's gonna be our biggest Christmas tree lighting event. Lots of yummy goodies I'd like to. The heat ducts in Roland Hall are gonna be added to make our entrance way nice and cozy. Keep the walls from cracking and paint chipping and et cetera. It's all good. It'll be nice and cozy for employees. And there's a new tractor platform for hanging signs and painting high objects and poles and such. So, are there any planning commissioners' questions or concerns? Do you want to have anything? Just my only comment is adding the things to our village newsletter given when we get a newsletter going to go out to. It gives you something to read about and write about.
Yeah, I'm always open to receiving.
I should probably put on a...
I'm impressed from the members of the PC, village council, that you'd like to see in the newsletter. You know, I've done a number of them. I kind of run out of...
I was gonna say, do you do it count all? We do them alone usually, right?
Yeah, so it's nice when somebody else writes an article. Someone's like, this is McDonald's, you know, news or something.
Okay.
They are helpful. I mean, I think people appreciate them.
They usually...
Especially when things change, because things change and evolve.
And they go out when?
Whenever we want. Usually it's brainers.
Say, too, the taxes, right, sometimes?
Pardon?
Sometimes with taxes?
No, township does that.
Oh, okay.
But they, you have to pay, it's mailing, mailing items is nice. Mailing them to the residents because it gets into their hands. We used to run them around, put them on roller vans on doors and stuff. And it takes a while and it doesn't always guarantee they get it, so... But, yeah, it's, the more interest there is in one, the easier it is for me to, I'm gonna power it up and do it.
Okay, with that, it's 8:04. I move to adjourn. Can I get a second?
A second.